All right. Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for the April 9th Board of Education Meeting. If you could all join me for Pledge to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will begin this evening with a special acknowledgement of the Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards. Dr. Byrne.
Good evening, everyone. We are delighted to begin tonight's meeting by honoring a group of extraordinary students. The Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards were created in 2012 to recognize students who have achieved great things in the arenas of academics, arts, and athletics. Tonight, we are honoring six Rye Middle School student athletes who competed and won at the highest level of middle school sports. This year, Rye Middle School had three teams with a total of 17 athletes that competed the National Middle School Squash Tournament in Philadelphia over the first weekend in February. The Rye Middle School girls won the girls' Division II. Thank you to the team, parents, families, and volunteer coaches for bringing home the National Middle School Championship to Rye Middle School and to Rye for the first, but hopefully not the last, time. You have made us all incredibly proud. Will you please, yes? Will you please come forward to accept your award and accept the congratulations of the administrators and Board of Education trustees when I call your name? Eva Apostolatos. Sophia Eklov. Sophie Erlich. Brooke Erickson. Natalie Hoffman. Eliza Relia. And now, we'd like to take a few photos with the students, the administrators, and coaches. That would be terrific. Parents, Sarah will take some photos, so you can get them from her, but then we'll give you a moment, so if you want to come up and do that as well. And the meeting is recorded, so it will be posted on the district website, so you'll be able to watch this over the weekend if you wish. Invite people over, some popcorn. It'll be great fun. So let's come on over. So if the coaches-
Thank you all for coming, and you are certainly more than welcome to stay and listen to all the wonderful things that we'll be discussing, but we will also not be offended if you choose to go home to do your homework. But thank you and congratulations again.
We're getting some sleep. Get some sleep.
Okay, we will now move on to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our April 9th Board of Education meeting. We have not yet had a board meeting since our spring recess and Snow Emergency Give Back Day, so I hope everyone enjoyed the break. Since the break, it feels like everything is happening in fast forward, and some of it frankly feels like a disaster movie. We had a lot of rain over the break, which caused us to need to deploy the tarp to cover the turf in Nugent Stadium. The continued threat of flooding throughout the break meant we had to keep it there longer than we would have liked. Thankfully, the tarp worked as designed, and we did not suffer any damage on the field, and we were inundated and had about six inches of water sitting on top of the field during the peak of the flooding. Then we had a storm last Wednesday night, the night of Curriculum Council, which I'm sure we'll hear about this in the update later on, with high winds and yet more rain that took down a number of trees in Rye, and one was right across from the high school, right around community lunch, as kids were returning to the school. It brought down some power lines and resulted in Milton Road being blocked for a good portion of the day as Con Edison was out there in DPW. And then more trees came down overnight. The power at the high school/middle school was out briefly, but we were running on generators, and the power was well back long before school opened the next morning. Shifting to more celebratory occasions, last Thursday, the Rye Fund for Education held its second annual gala. It was incredibly successful, and it was great to see so many people come out to support the fund and the innovative school programs supported by their grant program. On Friday, we're not at the natural disaster yet, but we had a terrific visit with Regent Fran Wills and Assemblyman Steve Otis at Midland School Friday morning. They came to visit and see our K-2 literacy program in action, as had State Senator Shelley Mayer, then Deputy Secretary for Education Maria Fernandez. We visited four classrooms, and as we were visiting Ms. Hughes', second-grade classroom observing a phonics lesson, it sounded like a very large truck rumbled by on Midland Road, but then it kept rumbling, and it was clear it was not construction noise or the subway, because we don't have a subway, although it sounded a little bit like both, but it was an actual earthquake. I did actually confirm that with one of our parents who works in the weather and disaster business. It was very helpful. But fortunately, while we were all a little shaken up, there were no injuries and no damage to any of the schools. Our custodial team, Rob Gimmigliano, facilities folks, inspected everything from gas lines to water lines to structural foundations, things like that, and the buildings were fine. Yesterday, we invited students and parents to view the eclipse from the fields at our schools. The Rye Fund had provided several thousand eclipse glasses to students, families, faculty, and staff as per an Insta-grant, and it was a really nice, community-feeling gathering. A number of us were here at the high school/middle school, and it was just great. Kids were lying on the field with their glasses, looking up, observing the eclipse. So thank you to RFE for the glasses and to the teacher volunteers who helped coordinate at each of the schools. Katrina Smith was here at the high school/middle school, Ruthann Olson at Midland, Katie Ridley at Milton, and Amy Carmen at Osborne. On Tuesday, April 16th, coming up, the board will meet at 9:00 a.m. at the Central Administration Building. There will be a short agenda for the meeting, but several significant items. The meeting must be held on April 16th in order for the board to vote on the Southern Westchester BOSI's budget for the '24-'25 school year. April 16th is the legally mandated date for the BOSI's budget votes. In addition, with the recent approval of several tax exemption changes for seniors, disabled taxpayers, as well as volunteer firefighters, there will be a public hearing and vote on adopting, potentially adopting, those same exemptions with regard to school taxes. Since our last meeting, I've taken my budget roadshow to a few new spots. We've been to the Children's Philanthropy of Rye meeting, Community Synagogue, the Rye Lions Club, and the Osborne School PTO meeting. Our upcoming roadshow appearances include this week at ECC, the Early Childhood Center at Community Synagogue, and the Rye Rec Seniors over at Rye Rec. If you can't make one of those meetings, all of the '24-'25 budget information, videos, and presentations are all posted in a special area on the district website. Look for the link in the pop-up bubble that appears when you first land on the website. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the rundown of disasters and other celebratory news in the district. So we will now move on to presentation and discussion number one, social and emotional learning.
Okay, good evening. So tonight, Erin Vrinenberg and I will be giving you an update on the work that the district has been doing around social-emotional learning, which has been led by our district-wide SEL Committee. And we are joined by Dr. Bill Meyer, one of our high school assistant principals, Nick Clare, our secondary instructional coach, Angela Garcia, the principal of Osborne School, and Francesca Martellata, a third-grade teacher at Osborne. So the last time that we presented on SEL, we spent a lot of time talking about the supports that we have in place for tiers two and three, so our more intensive supports for SEL. And tonight, we'll be focusing more on the work of the SEL Committee that is really supporting all three tiers. Primarily, right now, our work is focusing on tier one, so our SEL supports for all of our students. The Rye Commitment speaks to developing students to become socially responsible, caring citizens, and this work can be very complex because it includes bringing in all faculty, staff, community members, in order to get them on board. And it also means that we have to see SEL as being woven into all of the interactions that we have with students every day. And our district really understands the importance of taking that on because we really want to make sure that we understand the unique needs that we have here in Rye in regards to SEL. I think since, you know, post-COVID, we have seen a large increase in SEL needs across the country, and there are specific needs that we have that the committee is working to understand so we can respond to those and also be really proactive. And we really can't get to the type of learning that we aspire to with the Rye Commitment without first taking care of our students' mental health and wellness.
So in thinking about social-emotional learning, what we really need to think of is that it's very complex, it's multifaceted, and there's several different lenses in which we want to kind of look at it, and we'll go through in this presentation tonight. So we try to do this in a way that you could understand how we're further developing our K-12 SEL programming and how all the different pieces will fit together. So first, when we think about our SEL curriculum programs, this is really having to do with lessons, curriculum, what's happening there, and you'll hear a little bit more about that as we go through this presentation. You'll hear about how the school counseling program really fits in and supports all of the social-emotional learning that we do within the district. It's important to note that, you know, we did have our counseling audit, and one of the recommendations of that audit was that we align our SEL/K-12 SEL curriculum with the counseling curriculum. So we'll talk about how we're doing that and how they will be aligned. Additionally, when we think about culture and climate, this is an essential piece of an SEL curriculum or SEL within a school district. It really provides safety and trust for all students within the building, as well as faculty, staff, and administrators. It's a way that you can help to model what's appropriate and expected behavior. It promotes inclusivity and helps with community engagement as well. Additionally, we'll talk about how the educational experience that each of our students here in Rye, what they'll experience within their classroom to support the social-emotional learning and well-being for each of them. So we'll talk about what learning looks like and what each child will experience and have opportunities for as they go through the district.
So to give you some background on our SEL Committee, it was formed in the spring of 2023, so it's been around for about a year, and it consists of administrators, teachers, counselors, school psychologists, and parents. We're a group of about 27 people, so it's large, and there are subcommittees. And when the committee first came together, we had three goals. The first was to understand the SEL work currently being done across the district, because there were so many pockets of good things, and we really want to understand what is happening that's working, and then where are the gaps along the way. We also wanted to create a vision for the committee that was aligned to the Rye Commitment. So in the slide, when we were looking at the Rye Commitment, I made a specific connection to being a socially responsible, caring citizen. So we thought about what are the priorities that we need to hold as a committee to make sure that we can bring about that for our students. And then the third thing that the committee worked on was to identify the next steps that we had to do to create this comprehensive K-12 SEL program. And really, identifying the next steps was the first step in us thinking, where in the district can those things happen, and who should be doing them? So Bill's going to talk a bit about what it looked like as we worked through those three goals.
Thank you. So yeah, it's my pleasure to speak about the SEL Committee, and you don't often use the word "pleasure" in committees in the same sentence, but it actually was a great group of teachers and staff and psychologists and social workers. And what we had to do, and we were really tasked with, and what I hope to explain is sort of the process in which we worked through and sought to achieve those three goals. So the first part of the work was really flushing out our understanding of what was happening in the district. And because we had stakeholders across the different grade levels and different stakeholders within the community, we could get a better understanding of both what was happening, but how we understood that work. I think one of the biggest challenges facing SEL today is the wide variety of definitions that are pervasive in the field and the many different understandings, whether accurate or inaccurate, that exist. But for us to essentially build a comprehensive and aligned vision for what we hoped to do, it was important first to identify those key terms and definitions. Organically, in doing this work, essentially, we also began to see some of the gaps that existed and what wasn't happening within the district. So as we began to have these conversations, we worked through these ideas, each of the groups, and we had these subcommittees, and at first, they were based on the different levels of the district, elementary, middle, and secondary. We also began to articulate what we hoped and saw as a vision for the committee in terms of this work. As we looked at the vision, we then shared that collectively and began to see where the overlaps existed across the different levels. And I think what was pretty amazing was to see the commonality that existed and some of the key concepts of empathy, balance, intentionality, personal growth for students, a growth mindset. And we knew that these were sort of these foundational components that needed to be in that collective vision. As we had a better understanding of what we hoped to guide us in doing this work, then we came back to that idea of the gaps, right? What are the next steps that we're going to do in order to make this actionable? That it goes from an idea and a concept to a reality and a lived aspect of life within these schools in the district. So the first piece of that is an SEL curriculum, thinking about what that looked like, both is that something external, is that something that we have the capacity internally to build, is it a matter of just bridging gaps within existing programs within the district? Second piece, and this was an important piece, is like, what are the real needs of our students? And this is where we talked a lot about a screener. And you see this in sort of that academic and intellectual capacity, but we also need to consider sort of the emotional and social needs of our students. And so that's where we began to look at different programs and actually brought in different consultants to speak to us about screeners available. Third piece is how do you support teachers in having the capacity to deliver this? Because the reality is that they are in classrooms every single day, and for any SEL curriculum or vision or work to have a lasting and sustainable sort of process and aspect, there has to be sort of this capacity within the teachers, but that last piece as well, the buy-in. So how do you build the messaging? How do you sort of present this both to the staff, the schools, the community, and the teachers? So those were the three big steps that we sought to achieve.
So my group, a part of the committee, looked at the SEL screeners, and I think it's important to know, in doing some of the research and thinking about screeners, we really need to be able to look at screeners that are similar to that of the NWEA, where we're monitoring, we're able to progress monitor twice or three times a year. But keep in mind that to do this with SEL is really difficult. So we have narrowed it down to two different screeners that we think will meet the needs of what we're looking for in a screener. So A, the purpose of screening, are there students that require interventions or that we haven't identified as having a need that we need to put something in place for? The second thing is, are we able to use the tool for progress monitoring, and what does this look like? Then the third thing is, are we able to use this for how our curriculum and our program is doing? And are we seeing that it is positively impacting the social-emotional well-being of our students? So as I said, we're considering two screeners currently. Actually, tomorrow, we have a meeting with the administrators to talk about where exactly that's going to be implemented, what that looks like. The screeners involve, sometimes involve students, sometimes involve parents, sometimes involve teachers. So the ones that we're really looking to pilot are the ones that students are doing, as well as some teacher input. Because again, we're looking to make this comprehensive, right now, we're looking at this from a tier-one level, but if you choose the right screener, you can actually use it for tier-two and tier-three in terms of your system, and then there might be a need for some parent input, or as students get older, sometimes that's helpful. So more to come on that.
We used the same process when we were exploring different curriculum from various organizations, just as we did for the screeners. So we looked at, we explored the curriculum, we talked with representatives, we also got recommendations from other districts. And as the representatives came in, well, virtually, and spoke with us about their programs, it gave us the opportunity to ask questions and really think about what would best suit our needs. And the result, after a lot of discussion, was that there didn't seem to be one single program that was going to hit on everything that we wanted to bring to the school, in terms of specific lessons that offer tools and strategies for students, and programs that get more at culture, because a lot of this is a shift in culture in our interactions every day. So what we decided to do is pull together different programs or pieces of programs across the grade levels, K-12. You're familiar with the program of Kelso's Choice. You actually had Rosie Racaudetta here a few years ago, I believe, with the Frog, if you remember that presentation. So that program is working out very well for us, and so we decided to keep that in K-2. There is a new program called Responsive Classroom that we will be bringing onboard. We got a presentation from that organization, and we also have some history with Responsive Classroom in our district by some teachers, and so the committee is interested in bringing that to the district K-5. And then, we also are going to be building on the work that we've been doing around dialectical behavioral therapy. We have some DBT lessons right now in the grades three through five and sixth grade, so we really want to build those out from grades three through 10. In addition to that, we've been studying the work from Castle, as well as the New York State SEL benchmarks. And we're doing that to identify places that we want to add additional lessons to fit our needs. All of this is a lot of work, and so we want to make sure we have the right people onboard and that they have the right support to put this in place and to make it one whole, comprehensive program. And so we have started the process with the writing. The people doing that are our school counselors, social workers. Eventually, our physical ed and our health teachers are also a piece of this plan. And the curriculum is also being written and led by our instructional coach, Nick Clare, so I want to actually ask him to talk about the work that he's doing in designing those lessons.
Thank you. So yeah, the work that I'm doing right now is mainly with the school counselors in the middle and high school, and we've been able to really take a look at some of the areas of SEL that they want to be implementing in their developmental lessons when they push into classrooms. And what's great about the work that they've been doing with me is that we're implementing a lot of like active learning and critical thinking strategies in the lessons that we're writing. So they're really well-written lessons that go beyond just kind of stand and deliver. The kids are up and moving, collaborating, talking with each other. What's great is it's amplifying student voice, and we're really getting to hear a lot from the students. So the lessons that are being written from sixth grade on are really strong, and I'm like really proud of the work that the counselors have been doing with me. So it's nice.
And I'm glad that Nick is there to support them, because while counselors, you know, counseling is very different from teaching, right? They're more clinicians than they are teachers in that sense. So they're really enjoying their time with Nick. And I was just listening to one today say how much they've taken from him, and it helps their whole group lessons in a way that they didn't have before.
Erin, can I just ask, is there also grades 11 and 12 being addressed within this framework?
Within the specific lessons for grades 11 are going to be coming from Managing Your Future, which I probably should have included that, because we will be revising that as well. Thank you. So Responsive Classroom, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that program or not. It has been around for some time. It's more of an approach than it is specific lessons. And there are four different components to this approach. One is that it's built around having engaging academics, right? So we're doing a lot of work around active learning environments and critical thinking, and that is right in line with what Responsive Classroom says that you should have in place, because if kids are engaged in the learning, they'll be doing less things, they won't be doing things they shouldn't be doing, right? So we want to make sure that our learners are engaged in the classrooms. That's a big part of Responsive Classroom. There's also a component around positive community, and there are structures that it offers, such as the morning meeting, where it really builds that community for students, and Francesca can talk more about that. There's also effective management, so what are the strategies that you can use as a teacher to effectively implement classroom management for your students? And then there's also the developmentally responsive teaching in terms of how this approach to student discipline and making sure that the decisions that as a teacher that you make around discipline are really grounded in SEL. So Francesca has a lot of experience with this program, and she can talk to you more about how she uses it in her classroom.
Okay. Hi, good evening. I'm Francesca. So I was trained in Responsive Classroom 21 years ago when I started my teaching career, and I think it is one of the most amazing approaches to classroom, managing classroom behavior, becoming the teacher I am today. So I just thought I would talk to you guys a little bit about what it looks like in the classroom and some of the components that I use. One of the ones Dr. Murray just mentioned was morning meetings. So we know that research shows students do wonderful with routines. Morning meeting is one of those routines that is predictable for them, one that is creative and structured by me, and one that includes all the learners in the classroom. It is definitely one of my favorite parts of the day. We never skip it, no matter what happens first thing in the morning, if there's an earthquake, if there is an assembly, we always come back to it, and we will have the morning meeting, and they know that- And they know that no matter what, we'll probably have a morning meeting tomorrow after the state tests. So it's just, even if it won't fall first thing in the morning, we will still have our meeting. There are four components of the morning meeting. And there's a greeting, a share, an activity, and news and announcements. And again, it is structured, can have an academic focus, but it is, starts off low risk in the beginning of the year and builds to more higher risk as the students get to know each other and feel more comfortable taking those risks. Another component of the Responsive Classroom approach that I use frequently is logical consequences. And this one does take a little bit more time to master as a teacher because it's, it can be as simple as a student that is using crayons and they're breaking the crayons that they're using. You take the crayons. You don't take away recess and you, or you don't take away technology. You don't take away reading time. It has to match in order for the child, for it to make sense to the child and for the behavior to not happen again. And it's one that as a parent, I've tried to adopt at home as well because how quickly we want to train our husbands and our significant others to not take away technology for a week if they don't pick up their clothes. But the logical consequences one is one that is very helpful throughout in-school and out-of-school. Another component that you'll see in the classroom a lot is interactive modeling. And this one takes a teacher a while to wrap their head around because what you learn, what you learn as a teacher in some of the Responsive Classroom training is you, we assume that children know the right thing to do with a pencil. We assume that children know the right thing to do with a chair. But they don't take anything for granted when Responsive Classroom teaches, teachers about interactive modeling. Because they will, when you're trained, they will teach you that all materials, whatever it is, there's a way to use it, there's a proper way to use it, and it's instructing your students the proper way so they know the expectation. And then there's no confusion in the rest of the year. And it really, whether it's dumbing it down or making it more simple, the time you spend with these little routines is so much better throughout the rest of your year and you actually can get more content and more teaching done if some of these simple interactive modeling skills are done. The last one that I'm a big fan of through Responsive Classroom is academic choice. So academic choice is a way where teachers can invite students to show what they know in a variety of different ways. So let's say I teach a unit on fractions. We can come up with a menu of different ways they can show what they know, whether it's creating a recipe, or making a Google slideshow, or creating a board game, or doing a skit. And the different options that they can come up with that taps into their multiple modalities of learning is truly wonderful to see. And they're so creative. Instead of just saying, I want you to do this worksheet, or I want you to make me a slide deck. It really branches off into a wide variety of different ways they can show what they know. I think it's completely transformative, the approach. I'm beyond thrilled, and Tricia knows this, that this is going to be something that the district is taking on. And I'm really looking forward to supporting it however I can.
And I would just add that when Francesca joined Osborne a few years ago, I watched her in her classroom and we started to have conversations around the way in which she manages and runs her classroom and the way in which the students are such active participants. And also the way in which the students feel very safe. And so what do we know about children as they engage in their day and their learning? Some things are easy, some things are not. If they feel safe, if they feel like they have an important part in that classroom community, then they feel available to learn, no matter how hard the challenge is. And so over time, Francesca and I would talk more and more about how her classroom was such an amazing place for children to be and the impact that she was having on colleagues and how could we grow this? So Francesca started to bring along some colleagues into the conversation around what Responsive Classroom is and how we could have a greater impact if we're all using the same language, if we all treat this as an approach, not a turn the manual and let's find the next lesson that we need to teach the children. But how do we approach managing student behavior in school, having that sense of ownership within the students and the community, and then helping parents be part of that partnership as well? So we, I am just as excited as Francesca, but I actually will be doing more of the learning than she is, but am happy to know that this approach could be something that, I know some of the teachers at Milton have been trained, Francesca's been trained, but we can start to grow this further.
And thanks to the Rye Fund for Education, we have our first round of training happening this summer for a large group of teachers across four days.
So we've spoken about how our K-12 S E L curriculum, though we are pulling from several different places, I think it's important to note that our foundational skills are going to be rooted in the dialectical behavioral therapy that has been developed for schools. So this was, it's a cognitive-based therapy that with Dr. Alec Miller, there's been Dr. Massa as well, but we work with Dr. Alec Miller of CBC of Westchester, who has made this into a way that can be taught within schools. And so that is what you'll hear called Steps A D B T. A stands for adolescents. And Steps E D B T, which stands for elementary. And I think it's important to know that the structure that we're putting in place, Responsive Classroom, Kelso's Choice, Managing Your Future, all these different components are all going to have, the students are going to have the foundational skills of D B T through our Steps program. So why did we choose D B T? There's many curriculums out there. Do they have a curriculum and a manual with suggested lessons and everything? Absolutely. And so there is a framework for which, in which to instruct students in an explicit way of what these foundational skills are. And the reason why we chose D B T for our district is A, we've already started to do some of the work, but also because it is evidence-based that it does make a difference for students and schools. It is universally applicable. And the focus is really about prevention. And so when students have foundational skills and can make good choices for themselves, then you know, certainly, you know, there's a lot of things that can be done. So I thought it would be helpful for you to understand what that really looks like or what is that. We talk a lot about D B T, but really what it is, is it's four different modules. And the students in grades will have explicit instruction specifically regarding this in grades three through 10. And then in grades nine and 10, we're going to work with our consultants where we're going to integrate it with into the curriculum. And then in 11th and 12th grade, we also are going to be integrating it into the activities, Managing Your Future, and then certainly the internship, as well as the community experience that we are, want the service learning that they have to do and how they can actually utilize these in a practical way. So just briefly, mindfulness really is teaching skills. It's really the foundation for all that you do. It's about being present in the moment without judgment. So what's important is that students will learn how to respond effectively and rather than reactive impulsively. So there's a lot going into this. What I'm giving you is just a little sample of what these foundational skills are and the areas in which they will, they will help students and ultimately will help them in life. So that's one of the modules that the students are taught. They're taught different skills, strategies that they can use. And it's all developmentally appropriate based upon, you know, where the learners are. Another module is the distress tolerance. And this is really helping students, giving them the skills to cope with crisis and tolerate distressing emotions. So really giving them the skills for distraction, self-soothing, improving in the moment, and how to work through and cope with when you're feeling these really intense or difficult Another part of the D B T is really teaching skills for emotion, emotional regulation. So this is really teaching skills to identify, understand, and manage your emotions in a healthy way. So some things to think about here would be reducing your emotion reactivity and then also looking about ways to how to increase your positive emotional experiences. Then lastly, the last module is interpersonal effectiveness. And so interpersonal effectiveness is really teaching students the skills that will help to improve communication and relationships with others. And so this is some of the things that you might think about here is setting boundaries, using assertive communication. And these are all the different things that all of our students will learn and develop and build their skills with. I think that it's important to point out that when we're looking at our K-12 Counseling Department, we'll hear a lot about Castle and the Castle competencies. These are rooted in all of that. When we look at these different curriculums, Responsive Classroom, lessons that we're developing at the secondary level, Kelso's Choice, all of these, including the S E L benchmarks that we have to do for New York State, these are rooted in what the standards and what we need to do. So if students are able to have skills for these four areas, then we know that they have what's necessary to be socially and emotionally well.
So in order to do all of this, we have a lot of work ahead. It all lies ahead of us. So we're looking at next school year, what are we going to be focusing on? We really see that there are about three different focus areas. We have, we're going to be really increasing the amount of professional learning that we're doing around S E L next year. And we're thinking about this in different groups because different groups need different types of professional learning. In terms of administrators, we're going to be starting this summer during our administrative retreat around what does S E L mean for the culture and the community of each school building? And what are we going to be doing as administrators to shift that and provide a culture of care in every building? And then also the, we have to be training all K-12 faculty and staff in D B T so they understand what the basics are. They understand that when they, that they can use some of these tools and skills with students every day. If they are in a situation where they're not regulating their emotions, what do you do in that situation? How do you help de-escalate a student if necessary? School counselors need a specific kind of training because they're not just doing the tier one, they're doing the tier two and three. So sometimes they'll find, they're finding themselves in more intense situations. And then the professional learning for community, for parents. And we've started doing, providing some workshops for parents this spring. Erin really worked closely with CBC to provide one around anxiety and stress. And so next year, we want to think about other topics that we can bring to our community and also really make sure that parents understand what type of work we're putting in place in the classrooms for students. As we're piloting the screener this spring, next year, we want to have a screener in place where we're doing these screenings, these screenings two times a year, looking at patterns and looking at trends. In addition to that, we will continue to do our K-5 needs assessments that we've been doing with S E L the past few years. So we'll have that data as well, as well as looking at M T S S trains, trends across all buildings to see are there specific S E L needs that we're seeing in our M T S S process? And if there is a trend, is that, does that mean that we should be, you know, adding something or changing something with our S E L program? And we have curriculum design going on next year that will continue as we implement the D B T lessons and we continue to design lessons for grades seven through nine.
And just a little plug, on May 13th, we do have CBC of Westchester coming back. And they're going to be talking about resilience. So that will be, I think, a good talk. So, sorry, back to this. So to pull it all together, as we started, it's really multifaceted. There's a lot that's involved. But I think it's important to know that in terms of our curricular programs, we're looking to develop K-12 programs that are, S E L is embedded throughout our curriculum programs. It's explicit S E L instruction. It meets the S E L benchmarks, the New York State S E L benchmarks that are required. Some of the specific programs that we are using are the Kelso's Choice, the D B T that I spoke about, as well as Responsive Classroom. In terms of our school counseling program, they are a piece of this. And so they will be doing some of these lessons, not all of these lessons, but also the things that they're doing within the K-12 Counseling Program. How are the, what are those Castle competencies? How are those aligned in terms of school counseling? How is that improving and also fostering social, emotional learning and well-being for students? And also, there is the Advisory Committee that we have that will meet two or three times a year that's required so that we can look at the counseling program and how that's continuing to further support the S E L within the district. In terms of climate and culture, I think, again, this is really how are we looking to provide within a school, within our district, a positive school climate and culture that supports S E L learning in all that we do, including everyone from administration to all of our faculty and staff? How does this also include our parent involvement and engagement? And how are all of these things aligned? And that's what we're working towards. And then the educational experience. What are our students experiencing so that they not only have the skills necessary, but have opportunities to practice and use these skills? Are we developing lessons that allow for student voice and choice? Do they have authentic learning tasks so that they need to collaborate, so there is team building? Are we being inclusive in what we're doing? Are we looking for, you know, and how are we furthering our peer support programs and leadership opportunities well for all of our students so that we know that when they leave here, they have the skills necessary to be successful? And so just one last thing in closing, I think that it's important to just remember that S E L isn't about preparing students for the future. The way we're thinking about it, it's preparing them and empowering them to create a better present so that they can change the future.
So we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. It was a very comprehensive presentation, lots of great information. I have some questions, but I'll open it up to others first.
This, this is more, the screener is K-12 or no? A question mark.
We're working on figuring that out. So it depends on the screener. So not all screeners are K-12, not all screeners are, have students involved K-12. So there's many variations. So yes, that is the hope. And so we're trying to see where the best place to do that for our students is.
To stay with the screener for a minute, you had mentioned that you were looking at a screener right now that would only include students and some teacher input. And I was just wondering what the thinking is behind that.
So the thinking behind that is that we want to get information that can help us to not only identify, but progress monitor in terms of, we really have to look at what is it that's required of a teacher if they are filling out these screeners for a class of 20 students? If they're filling out a screener on every student, what's the time commitment? What does that look like? And also, what information does that give us versus a student and having them complete that same thing, looking at the time commitment? The information that you'll get and what you can use for the screeners at different developmental ages is different. So a student at K-1 and 2 typically, their self-reporting skills are much different than that of the high schoolers, for example. So when doing a screener and relying on a kindergarten to tell them, how are you feeling? Do you feel connected? How's, you know, the climate and culture? So certainly, some can tell you that. And in some cases, the adults have a better handle because they can see that in the way that they're interacting with their peers and everything. On the flip side, when you look at teachers, if they had to complete for the secondary kids, they don't always tell you what's going on. So you don't get that information. So again, we can see how they're acting and what that looks like. And we might not have the insights from the child themselves.
So the way I'm thinking about a screener is different than it sounds like, that the way the committee is thinking about a screener is I'm thinking about a screener from more of a climate and community standpoint. And you seem to be indicating that perhaps these screeners are more independent evaluationary, how I'm feeling as opposed to how is a system feeling?
So I would, I would think that, so it's important to know there are two different things. So, so climate and culture is one thing. The screener is not, we aren't targeting. The screener is not, we aren't targeting that with the screener. We're really looking to target, are we meeting the mental health needs of all of our students? And have we identified students that, so we talk in a broad sense about social-emotional learning. Really, it's are our students that are struggling with mental health to some degree? There's many variety, variations of that. But how are we identifying, just like we would identify a student that's struggling with math, that's struggling with reading? How are we identifying a student that is struggling emotionally? And so that is a bigger purpose of the screener at this point. I do think that the climate and culture is also important, but those are two different.
Where we get the climate and culture information from right now, some of it comes through in our challenge success surveys in terms of like a sense of belonging for every, you know, for the student, the student body in general. So some of that data is coming from there. Go ahead.
I saw you in my profile.
Yeah, sorry. So, so kind of building on that. Based on the, on the, the vision that you've identified, which I'm not quite sure what it is because we saw this, the, the full vision, ooh, the full SEL vision. Because we saw the charts of the paper, but there wasn't like an articulated SEL vision. So I'm curious what role that is playing in how we are looking at what our current needs are for an SEL approach. And, and I just think that, so it's occurring to me as you're talking about identifying the emotional needs of individual students, that we currently have quite a number of programs within the district that are doing that. And so I'm just, I guess what's, what's prompting my curiosity is, how does the vision that we, that you guys have sort of thought about play into narrowing down into identifying the mental, more mental health, potential mental health needs of students? And, and where does the culture piece come into that vision?
Sure. Can I read it out loud for you?
Sure.
Is that helpful? Okay. I did vary between putting it up or letting you kind of see more of the process. But the way the vision, and this isn't a vision for the district, it really was for the committee to see what we can kind of, what we can prioritize. So, says that the SEL Committee prioritizes social-emotional development in order to create a safe, inclusive, and intentional community where all individuals feel valued, supported, and empowered to explore their personal growth and wellness. So it is about student empowerment. It's about safety and creating an intentional community with students. So when I think, when we think about that, we think about what are we, what are we doing for all kids? Where they walk into a building every day and they feel like, this is where I belong, this is where I feel safe, and I'm, and I'm a part of this place, and I'm seen here. So it kind of speaks to the broader framework for SEL for the district. I don't know if I answered your question so much.
Yes and no. But I don't have, I can't articulate a question back for you right now because I'm thinking too much. But I, I understand, I think I understand where you're going with it. And I guess where I'm struggling a little bit with, with where we are right now in terms of the process is I guess I'm not sure how we go from getting a little bit of our, our data about culture from the challenge success pieces and where that connects with what needs were identified that might exist within each of the levels. And, and then yet we're looking at screeners that are specific to mental health needs. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do. I think that the screener, while it just, just has with NWEA, you're going to see kids that need more support in areas. But you can also get a broad sense of the school community on a whole. Wouldn't you agree with that?
Right. So, so I guess a couple of things to say about screen. We actually don't know, Jen, and that's why we have to pilot it. Because we don't know what the information is going to give and what we're going to do with that. So I think that is kind of the hesitation with just saying, okay, we're going to do the screener and then we're going to move forward. And the reason why we're, we're trying two different ones, to really see what is that information? What does that give us? And how can that really, you know, help us identify? You know, is it a culture and climate? Is it, you know, are there individual needs? Is it both? Does one screener give us something versus another? There's so many out there, and one is not comprehensive for all of those things. So I think that's why the pilot will really help us to really say, okay, well, this helps us with this information, and we still don't know this information. So we don't really have that answer yet. I think some of this discussion is really great because it's what Trish and I have been going through all year about this. And so in preparation for this presentation, actually, I, a way to think about this which might be helpful, so there's a couple ways to think about it. So when you're thinking of SEL, that's large. There's many components involved. So all of the components to make a system, a school, a district that is fully SEL inclusive, it includes all of these things. And I'll just read them because I do think it'll make some sense. So you need an SEL embedded curriculum, you need explicit SEL instruction, you need SEL assessment and monitoring, you need professional learning specific to SEL, you need positive culture and climate, you need parent and community engagement, you need peer support and leadership opportunities for students, and you need crisis intervention and mental health support. So what we know is that we are, we have really, some really good pockets and areas that we're doing really well in. So really, a lot of the focus on this is how can we strengthen that positive culture and climate? How can we look to strengthen our, our explicit SEL instruction? Because I think the embedded curriculum, we do a really nice job with that, but we aren't, we can do, I think, a better job of that Tier One explicit instruction. And then when we look at professional learning, how are we, how are we being intentional to not only the language and what we're teaching, not only our teachers, our faculty, our staff, our support staff, and then our administrators? And how are we, as a district, all kind of talking the same language? So I think when you say like, what are the pieces, where are we at? I think our biggest thing that we've identified from our SEL Committee is that we need a K-12 SEL Tier One explicit instruction for students. And so that we're building out. We've started some of that this year, and we're going to implement some of that next year, and then the following year, and then in subsequent years as well. So we're actually working on kind of a scope and sequence. And then in terms of, when we look at the climate and culture, how, what are the things that we're doing to that? So I don't know, maybe that helped or didn't, but
Yeah, I mean, clearly
Clarify.
We're in process.
Absolutely, 100%.
So it's, I think that's what, where these questions are coming from, is how do we understand where, how we got to this part of the process? And then having a clear understanding of what are the, what, what are the things that we are going to check and balance against that help us get to the next part of the process? So when I think about the vision, that's, that to me, seems like it would be a big part of, as you move forward in this process, you want that to be a unifying piece.
Grounds the work.
Yes, because that's what you're going to root back into as you figure out, are these screeners something that do or do not help us in what we're trying to do from a, from a system-wide SEL approach?
Right.
So thank you. I appreciate you talking through that. One last question, then I'll stop. So in your description of Responsive Classroom, the, the elements of that sound like they're fantastic. My assumption is it's only K-5?
It is, it's actually a K-8 program, but we decided to start K-5 right now.
Okay. What struck me as you were talking about those things is that the, if there was a way for those to be adaptable for
Upper grades.
Upper grades. Because if we are going to start there in the elementary level, kids are going to hit sixth grade and it's going to be like, whoa, what happened? So, so that is something that, as you were talking about, it seemed like it's something to consider.
Absolutely.
And not only is it, whoa, what happened? It's, as a middle schooler, oh my God, what's happening to me?
Well, at the same time, yeah.
And so that's in and of itself a hot mess of a time for a child. And so to be able to have those routines and rituals and to have that commonality of language to help me come from a much smaller, more contained environment to a grander scale of more fun, but more insecurity, more self-awareness is, really would be ideal, I think. And I, you had mentioned that it was at Milton. And so has there been an opportunity to talk with the staff at Milton? Because I know it was, it was in pockets there successfully. As with all things, things fade over time. And so there were struggles in maintaining it. And so has there been an opportunity to kind of have a reflective conversation with staff at Milton about the successes and failures of it yet? And in a way of trying to kind of gameplay out, say, okay, what do we need to do as a district to help ensure greater success and comfort for all staff?
You know, I haven't done that in a formal way. We talked with the teachers from Milton who were on, who are, who are on the SEL Committee. And I think it's, it's, comes down to just making sure that, you know, you, we dedicate ourselves to it and keep it alive. I think some, somehow, somewhere it fell off for no other reason than that. And so I think that when we prioritize everything, and the vision I just read, I think we just have to prioritize and say, we're investing a lot in this program, we believe in it, and I think we're going to see evidence of it, and we have to keep it going and build upon it in the middle school, I would say.
And I think in the, in the elementary school and subsequently in the middle school, through the tenths of Responsive Classroom, it is so easy to embed it into your natural day. And I'm sure the question will come from the community as they're seeing things talked about, like curricular programs. The question is, where do, where does that explicit instruction take place? Because where I don't want it to come out of is my child's time to do math and reading and foreign language. And as we all know, as a system, it doesn't matter what they're learning. If they don't have those requisite SEL skills, they're not going to pay attention in Spanish. So where, just to, for the community to understand, where will that more explicit instruction in those upper grades come?
So it's from the same, in the upper grades at elementary school, the DBT lessons are this, is that you're talking about?
In, in high school. So when you're talking about the ninth, you know, doing the DBT steps, grades three to 10, and then talking about the 11 and 12.
So in high school, they have a free period every eight days. Am I correct, Bill? And that's where we're pulling that time from. So it's not, they're not taking it from the classes. So there, right now, we have, our counselors have two lessons designed for ninth grade and two for 10th grade, and that's where that, that time is coming from. So as we build it out, those periods are there.
We, we also spoke about doing the DBT as part of ninth grade PE, so that we're going to look to develop that. So we need to, before we can do that, we have to provide the training to the staff so they can implement that. So that is a curricular work that we're going to be doing, as well as in 10th grade into the health class. So when we look at K through 5, all of the explicit instruction is happening now, thanks to you and your support of the counselors. The counselors are able and have the time, they go into the classroom and do the explicit instruction regarding that. In 6th grade, we are looking at one of the courses. It was happening in habits of mind, but that's going to shift a little bit, but that's going to happen, where they will get explicit instruction. In 7th grade, again, we're looking at PE courses again, and where does that fit in and aligned with their wellness and, you know, health and all of that? And then in 8th grade, health again. So we aren't looking to replace, we're looking to say, how can we further enhance and make sure that we are being explicit in the instruction as we look at our curriculum?
I would just, a reminder for everyone, when we first started dabbling years ago with Natalie on DBT Steps A in the middle school, it was happening in health classes and PE classes. And that was something that shifted over time. But that was a place where we did look. I know Joe has also talked about the, he's had a committee that's looked at the structure of the middle school schedule. And I think this is part of that conversation, once they, they start that work in earnest as well.
One last, I promise, and then I'm done. This is a massive undertaking. It's a so much work. What is the, how, how long do you think the, the roll-up rollout is? Is it five years, 10 years? Dr. Baby steps likes to take things, what are we looking at?
If not 10 years.
Okay.
Three.
Yeah, it's about three years. Because we
K-12.
K-12.
K-12, three years.
Yes, because next year, we need to make sure that we have the DBT lessons designed and in place for grades seven, seven, eight, and nine. And, and the health piece also is part of that. So we, we just, we need probably a year to train those teachers till we can implement to the following year. So I would agree with the three-year timeline.
That's great.
But it is a lot, yeah?
It is a lot.
Yeah. This is, it's, it's very complex to do SEL, you know, system-wide.
Assuming no pandemics or anything like that.
Well, but then I think it's, it's back to the point of what you were reading before, Dr. Greenberg, where you're, this is not an add-on. This is not a pillar program where you're going to go to the cafeteria and there are going to be your five pillars of your community, and we are character, and we are caring, and we are kind. This is about changing a, not necessarily changing, I'll use the word enhancing. It's enhancing a, a culture within the community of the school district to help further support our students, to allow them to succeed at their highest level. And so that's a mighty large task. So I certainly am excited to see it happen. I love a three-year timeline. Y'all know me, I like to move probably even faster, but I'll take, you know, listen, it's a lot of work. And I, and I do appreciate all of the work from the committee and from the community who, of our, our teachers. But I will just put in a plug that I do hope that the Responsive Classroom training is not limited to our classroom staff. Because our aides are the ones who are seeing the breakdowns at recess, are the ones who are monitoring the meltdowns at lunch. Our security guards at the middle school and the high school, they have interactions with our kids in ways that many of the other adults don't. And so when we think about it, it is systemic. And, you know, I, I'm excited to see what comes of it. So thank you all very much. Anyone else? Because I've occupied so much time, I apologize. Sorry. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for this information. It's great, looking forward to it. We will now move on to hearing of the public of non-agenda items. We have no public, so I will skip our statement this evening. But it's always, the public is always encouraged to come and to attend board meetings. We always love to see you. We, can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Chris is not here, so I need hands. Sean Clough, thank you, seconded by Kelsey Johnson. Let's take a look at this evening's consent, consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional. Consent agenda classified. Bless you. Consent agenda pupil personnel services in special education. Consent agenda curriculum instruction and assessment.
I have one quick question.
Please.
For the, where is it? Oh my God, did it go away? The, is that not here? Where's the algebra curriculum? Wasn't that on here? Yes. It was that on, it was supposed to be on here, right? Yes, sorry. Maybe I missed the spot.
The curriculum hours to write the curriculum, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Just to get a little understanding of what that update is for.
Sure, sure. So we're, as, as you were aware, I hope you were, you're aware, we are changing our math pathways. And so our Algebra I is ending in the Regents, whereas previously it was, the Regents was after Algebra II. So they're rewriting Algebra I to end in a Regents. They're pulling topics down from Algebra II and putting them in Algebra I.
So that's for kids who are taking Algebra I, whether it's in 8th grade or 9th grade?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, ready? All right. So can I have a vote to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor? That's six, nothing with one absence. So on So on this evening's consent agenda, we, um, let's see what the explicit language is because I don't want to mess it up. Uh, and see, now I'm going to mess it up. Well, we want to, uh, we accepted our election inspectors for our May 21 trustee and board election, and we want to thank our members of our community who come out to support and help all of our community members, uh, be able to exercise their civic duty and right in their ability to vote. And so that will be on May 21 in the middle school. Also, we have, we accepted the corrective action plan to address the one area of recommendation from our fiscal audit this year. We also have the appointment of the ESY and RIREC coordinators. And, um, it allows the district and RIREC to be able to work together in the summer to support our students, to ensure that they're able to have continuity of learning, but also wonderful social, uh, interactions with their peers in the summer. And so it's really been a great program. And so I'm thrilled that that's on this evening's consent agenda. So seeing that, now we will go to information and discussion, policy review. Ms. Boyle, student harassment and bullying intervention?
Yes. So we actually, um, reviewed, uh, this policy, um, probably not the past meeting, but the meeting before. And originally, we were going to just update the, um, number because NISBA numbers this policy differently from how we had numbered it. But within that review, we also noticed that there was an update, um, that was not, not fully in, within our current policy, which was in the reporting and investigation section. And it talks, there was some language that I think that probably had changed over time and, and somehow, um, we did not have it incorporated into ours, so we wanted to make sure it was included. And the paragraph is, um, just right, like the fourth paragraph underneath the reporting and investigation headline. And it, it just explicitly talks about if staff observe, um, and not just if they are aware, but also if they observe, uh, any harassment or bullying, that they need to be reporting that as well. So that was the additional update that we made. And then there was, the last update was to, um, the change in the name of a report that was at the very end. So it used to be called the Violent and Disruptive Incident Report, VADER, and is now called the School Safety and Educational Climate Reporting. So those are the two changes.
I prefer that name. Yes. I think the violent and disruptive incident just seems a bit aggressive.
It does.
Not everything's violent. Okay.
Any questions? No? Okay. That was it.
Okay, great. So communications to and from the board, board and district committee updates. All right, past meetings, Ms. Boyle, policy?
So at policy, um, we talked about what we just talked about now. We also continued our discussion around the, um, mission and vision, the, and the RAI commitment, um, and the various other policies that we have that speak to those, um, to, a vision and mission. And, and we've also talked a little bit about the code of conduct, which integrates well with tonight's discussion because, um, the way that our code of conduct, um, is written is, is a little antiquated in, in its approach. And I think as we are continuing down our path to, uh, look at how we're approaching student discipline and working with students, that that document is also going to evolve over time. And so that's a continuation of the discussion. I see Dr. Byrne wanting to
Well, I just, today we did have, so I know we've had principals in the conversations at policy. We had a, a discussion at a recent cabinet meeting with all the principals together. And today, um, Joe De Giovanni, Suzanne Short, and I, and Michelle spent several hours going line by line through after having several weeks of reviewing and putting comments on a, a document. So we did a lot of work on that today. We've kicked a bunch back to, um, Emily Lucas at Ingerman Smith because there were some pieces that felt really specific in terms of the legal pieces of it that we wanted to verify. But there was a lot of proposed change that we went through, uh, today.
Great.
So it was good progress.
That's wonderful. And, and of course, you know, the whole, one of the things that we've talked a lot about in terms of vision, mission, code of conduct, whatever it is, is that we want these to not just be documents, we want them to be pieces that actually are integrated into how we function as a system. And so that's been a, a big, um, point that we've been trying to keep in mind every time we're going through all of this.
Great.
So that was it.
Awesome. Curriculum council. I mean, there's going to be an amazing, something happened, so somebody's got to tell us. What was it? Callie?
We had a curriculum council meeting last Wednesday where there was a power failure. So it was added, uh, it was a little more interesting than Tricia anticipated. Started off with a show choir performance. Because of the power failure, Mr. Snowden could not, um, play the music, so they did an acoustic
Ooh!
Version.
Oh, very cool.
So it was wonderful. It was so great to see the, the students perform. So that was a treat. And then, um, we went over a literacy update at the elementary schools. A committee member, I think, had asked last meeting for an update, so Tricia went through that. And then we talked about science. There's a new elementary science curriculum that's coming next year. The past year, I think that we piloted two programs and then the committee chose Mystery Science. And we, we got to see, um, a, um, like an example of it. And so that we could, um, and ask questions about that. It's very engaging, hands-on, and manageable were the three tenants that Tricia talked about. And then, um, at the end, we got an IB international baccalaureate update, and that will be ruled out, um, fall of 2025. We're in the process of being, is it accredited or approved for that? But that seems like that's on track.
We're in the authorization process right now.
Okay.
Okay, great. Technology committee.
That was me. So we continued, the group continued reviewing, um, based on the survey data that, uh, the technology committee, or the technology, um, uh, committee got back from all the teachers, five different types of software that seem to have some similarities among them that many of the teachers use. And so there was a discussion around how, um, how each of those seems to be used, what seem to be the areas that are, are more applicable. Many of them are, um, sort of less K through 12, more elementary, and then segmented some for secondary. So there, that's sort of the next, uh, phase of the discussion around what are some of the things that, that, um, teachers are using? And do we need to have district-wide subscriptions to all of them? Are there ones that work well, that do not require a subscription? Are there ones that maybe contain almost everything that you want, but maybe everyone hasn't been exposed to them yet? So that was a lot of the, the ongoing discussion.
Great. All right. Has there been, Ms. Johnson, a transportation committee? Do you have any updates from that? We haven't heard from them in a while.
Meeting on Thursday of this week.
Oh, perfect.
So I'll be happy
All right.
To circle back on that.
Excellent. Perfect. Okay, we have listed here on the agenda that our next meeting is the 30th, but there is a meeting that will actually be happening on April 16th, as Dr. Byrne alluded to during, or didn't allude to, he explicitly stated that it will be at 9:00 AM at CAB. And so that will be our next meeting. And part of that will be the board's, uh, review and vote for the South, Southern Westchester BOC's trustee and budget. And that is mandated that it must happen on the 16th. So we're having a special meeting for that. In addition, on April 16th, at that board meeting, we will, as a board, review the changes to the tax exemptions for seniors, senior citizens, disabled citizens, as well as firefighters. And so that is something that was recently adopted or voted on by the city council. And so the board will undertake that review and conversation as well on April 16th at that meeting. So
And we do have April 13th, the joint meeting with the city council.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. And after that will be a joyful parade down Purchase Street, celebrating all those who get to participate in softball and baseball. But I do understand they already had opening weekend was Yeah, so it's
It's a soft opening, Tom, is that?
But the official isn't until you walk down Purchase Street. So we're ready to go on Saturday. So certainly, we, it's always a great day and it's not supposed to rain. So we hope the community can come out and support all of our students and all of our community members who participate, which is wonderful. We will be adjourning into executive session, so we will not be coming back out. So may I please have a motion to go into executive session? Tom Stein, seconded by Kelsey Johnson. So we will see you Yep. All those in favor to go to executive session? Six, nothing, one absence. So we will see you live and in person again on April 30th. Good night.